Unknown participant is now exiting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you, please be seated. Jared, please take role.
Mr. Bekowski.
Here.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Here.
Mr. Embrasia.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi.
Here.
Mr. Fatoulis. Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam. Mr. Klein. Mr. Macy. Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Here.
Mr. Palmeri. Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio. Mr. Walton. President Katina.
Here.
We have eight members present at the moment.
Thank you, we'll begin with proclamations slash certificates 13435-25.
A proclamation recognizing Frank Ogasio upon his retirement as executive director from the Allegheny County Housing Authority sponsored by councilmembers Filiagi and Klein.
Gentlemen? Gosh, I gotta get prepared, sorry. Glasses.
Unknown participant is now joining.
Okay. How am I broken? Hi. Um, can you join? Yeah. Awesome, awesome. Do you want to make a?
Before proceeding, please let the record deflect that Mr. Palmeri is now present by telephone as well, and Ms. Hallam is with us in person.
Okay, okay. Look at me, okay, this is all for this gentleman right here. I guess I will start if I could, and we've been, we have a special guest, obviously, who's here with us, the county executive. Thank you so much for joining us, and this occasion, however, is for Mr. Frank Ogasio. President Katina, members of council, invited guests, I can't see y'all with these on, and other community members, thank you for being here. It is an honor to present this proclamation in recognition of Mr. Frank Ogasio's 38 years of service to the county. I was first introduced to Mr. Ogasio, and I, he said I could call him Frank because I do know him as Frank, first through my husband Mark, who is actually the chair of the housing authority, the board. And so, Mark would come home and, and we would talk about our daily work and his meetings and my meetings, and he would say Frank said this, and Frank initiated that, and I was like, who is this Frank? And at the time, I hadn't met him, and so I was eager to meet Frank Ogasio and see if he was all that, and well, I want to tell you, he was, and he is. Mr. Ogasio Frank is a dignified man who has treated some of our most vulnerable, vulnerable residents with dignity and kindness. He's a terrific manager, a manager of people and staff, and a manager of situations and negotiations. He is, I've come to know him as a calm and capable person who managed a system, which is the housing authority of Allegheny County, which is something that is prone to uncertainty and strife, but he did it with grace and humbleness. So it is my honor to present this to you, Mr. Ogasio, and I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we'll let you have your comments, thank you. So, the official part of everything, whereas Vince Lombardi once said, "The price of success is hard work, dedication to the job at hand, and the determination that whether we win or lose, we have applied the best of ourselves to the task at hand." That quote completely depicts the true essence of Frank Ogasio's character and his 38 years, including 28 years, as executive director dedicated to the Allegheny County Housing Authority. And whereas Frank began his career with the authority in 1987, during which time he also held positions of Director of Housing Choice Voucher Program and Deputy Executive Director. These experiences, coupled with Frank's appointment as executive director, have allowed him to shape the policies and programs that have positively impacted thousands of families in Allegheny County. And whereas as a lifelong resident of Pittsburgh, Frank has always been deeply committed to the betterment of our community. Under Mr. Ogasio's leadership, there have been countless milestones, including when the Allegheny County Housing Authority achieved the High Performer Designation from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, we call that HUD. On multiple occasions, they received this performance. The High Performer Designation is the highest honor that HUD could give to a public housing authority. Achieving the prestigious High Performer Designation is a culmination of Mr. Ogasio's effective strategy that the Allegheny County Housing Authority's department directors established management performance standards that exceeded HUD's benchmarks. And whereas Mr. Ogasio also led innovative housing initiatives like the Homestead Partnership Life Center, obtaining three HOPE 6 grants, various tax credit and bond financed housing developments, and worked tirelessly to promote, and this is very important to me and many members of the community that don't really know what HUD does and what the Allegheny County Housing Authority does, but he worked tirelessly to promote resident self-sufficiency through job training programs, resident-owned businesses, and homeownership opportunities. That's key, and that's unique to Allegheny County. And whereas during his tenure, the Allegheny County Housing Authority has addressed misconceptions about public housing and its residents. Most residents are hardworking individuals striving to improve their lives and dedicated to providing better opportunities for their families, and Frank conveyed that message to all. Despite funding challenges from HUD, which have impacted the scope of the housing authority's work, Allegheny County Housing Authority has continued to provide significant economic and social benefits to our communities. The authority's capital improvements support local contractors, create jobs, and foster community development. And whereas the authority has improved the quality of life for many individuals by providing quality, dignified housing for low-income families and senior citizens. With at least 25,000 people in 3,200 public housing and 6,000 housing choice voucher units, Frank has always considered his work a labor of love. And whereas Mr. Ogasio's tenure as the Allegheny County Housing Authority, at the, Allegheny County Housing Authority, sorry, has been, often been a collaborative effort with municipal leaders, government officials, and dedicated board, and most importantly, the residents of Allegheny County. Frank states that none of this would have been possible without the unwavering support of the authority's team and the board of the directors. Together, it built an organization dedicated to the principles of innovation, collaboration, and excellence in customer service. Now, therefore be it resolved that we, the Allegheny County Council and County Executive Sarah Inemorato, council president Patrick Katina, council members, all of our council members, do hereby honor Frank Ogasio for his contributions and successes with affordable housing in Allegheny County. We thank him for his hard work and dedication to the Allegheny County Housing Authority for 38 years and wish him the best as he begins a new chapter of his life. Thank you very much, Frank.
I'll be brief. Frank, you are a man of few words, but a man of tremendous amount of character and integrity. I got to serve on the Allegheny County Housing Authority Board for about five years as vice chair before stepping into the role as county executive, and the first time I sat down with Frank, he said, "The thing that you need to know about the housing authority is that we're in the business of housing people." And I said, "Oh, this guy and I, we're gonna get along." And really sparked my desire to learn more about the housing authority and dive deep into the work that was happening, and I saw a tremendous amount of care and creativity and excitement about how to use the tools that existed to make sure people had a home. And during my time on the board, we did things like launch landlord liaisons to get more people to accept housing choice vouchers. We survived a pandemic together, remember that? That was, that was a thing. But Frank and the team was so open to adopting things like tenant mediation and working with partners like Action Housing and Just Mediation and other housing advocates. You know, I've been in a tremendous amount of groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings, and you know, I've talked to the residents who live in our housing authority properties, and I've seen how Frank interacts with them, I've seen him look them in the eyes and treat them with dignity and respect and shake their hands, and really, I see the joy in people's faces because they know that there is someone leading the housing authority that cares deeply about them and about the place that they call home and about their community. And Frank, you leave behind a big hole, but a tremendous foundation and legacy that will live on for decades to come, and we so appreciate your service, and we're excited to see what you do next, and please don't go far.
Thank you. Thank you. The years went by fast. I could blink and, you know, I'm coming to the housing authority for the first time in 1987, and where do years go? Certainly, I'm honored tonight to receive this, these proclamations, and I couldn't have done it, I couldn't have done it alone, everything that we've accomplished over the years, you have to have a very good staff. I have two of my staff here with me tonight, Mike Vogel, our police chief, Mike, and Rich Stevenson, our acting executive director, who was our CFO. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the low-income families and seniors in Allegheny County. I'll forever remember everything about my job and about serving the people, I met a lot of great people, many leaders in the communities, they, you know, the best thing I could say was when we, when we finished Heritage Highlands, which is near the Rankin Bridge, and it was just finished, and I was walking down, walking outside of the community center that we just built, and a couple of the residents came by and said, "What you said came true." And I'll, you know, I'll remember that always, and, you know, it was just gratifying to hear how they appreciated what we did. So thank you, and truly honored to receive this award, these awards tonight, thank you very much.
Thanks for reading everything. Thank you for letting me get fun time.
All right, everybody. Me too, actually, on this side. Alrighty, okay, everybody, ready on me? Ready? One, two, three. Got it.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Congratulations.
This is your backup one in case you need one.
Before proceeding, please let the record deflect that Ms. Pritzio is now present.
13436-25.
That's a proclamation recognizing Christina Cosotis on being named the 2024 Pittsburgher of the Year, sponsored by councilmembers Fatoulis, Bekowski, Filiagi, Pritzio, and Macy.
Hi. Welcome, thank you very much. Hi. Well, it is my pleasure to read this proclamation this evening on behalf of my colleagues. So this is going to talk a little bit about Christina Cosotis, who's the CEO of the Allegheny County Airport Authority, and y'all know the airport authority and the airport for your recreational travel, for your corporate travel, there's a lot that happens in that wonderful, wonderful asset that we call our airport here, home within Allegheny County, but I was looking at the website, and there's a lot more that happens behind the scenes that people don't recognize perhaps and realize. You have a childcare, that was new, we were able to see that on a tour this year, and so you're investing in your people, but there's a lot of training that happens there too, as I saw. So the airport houses one of the nation's premier aviation maintenance schools, if folks didn't know that, air medical transport services, flight training operations, and two fixed base operators, and it's home to several corporate planes and numerous private pilots' aircrafts. So there's a lot behind the scenes that perhaps we don't see when we first enter that very wonderful space that is undergoing a major renovation in very soon this year, we'll, we'll all reap the benefits, I think, maybe, maybe, am I speaking too soon? Okay, so I would like to read this proclamation. Whereas Christina Cosotis, Chief Executive Officer of the Allegheny County Airport Authority, has been named the 2024 Pittsburgher of the Year by Pittsburgh Magazine for spearheading a revolution in air travel and reinventing the airport. And whereas, under her leadership, Ms. Cosotis has led the airport's renaissance, transforming Pittsburgh International Airport to an origin and destination airport that reflects, connects, and supports this community even in the midst of the pandemic. Ms. Cosotis forged ahead with a new $1.57 billion landside terminal funded without any local taxpayer money. That is on track to open later this year. And whereas Ms. Cosotis's accomplishments over the last 10 years as CEO are many, the number of non-stop destinations has increased from 36 to 62. New airlines are flying from Pitt representing all but two domestic carriers in the country. Non-stop international routes have resumed with British Airways to London Heathrow and Icelandair to Reykjavik.
Reykjavik.
Reykjavik, I tried, Iceland, thank you. And increased annual passenger traffic neared 10 million in 2024. And whereas the airport authority has also used the 8,800 acres in the airport corridor to great effect, the airport was the first in the country to have a microgrid that 100% powers the airport using natural gas and solar energy. Its Neighborhood 91 is the world's first end-to-end additive manufacturing production campus that condenses and connects all components of the supply chain into one powerful production center. And its X-Bridge program allows the airport to partner with new and emerging companies to test products and services at the airport for potential future deployment. Focusing on the passenger experience has also been a significant priority for Ms. Cosotis, who also ensured that the airport authority stays on course and continues to be an airport for all Pittsburghers, no matter where in the region they call home. And whereas, prior to joining the Allegheny County Airport Authority in January 2015, Ms. Cosotis spent time as a global commercial aviation consultant. She has advised airports around the globe on economic strategy, developing business plans, and working with state departments of transportation on airport systems. She was also previously employed in the airport sector as Deputy Director of Communications at the Massachusetts Port Authority in Boston. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Allegheny Council members, myself, Michelle Nakarati-Chapkus, Nicholas Futoulis, Patrick Katina, Jack Bekowski, Suzanne Filiagi, Anita Pritzio, and Bob Macy, do hereby recognize Christina Cosotis on being named the 2024 Pittsburgher of the Year, and we thank her for her dedication to transforming Pittsburgh's airports to reflect and serve the community, inspire the industry, and advance the region's role as a world leader. In witness whereof, we have hereunto caused the seal of the county of Allegheny to be affixed this day, March 11th, 2025. This is officially, would you like to say some more? Yes, just off the top of my head, very quick. Thank you very much. I'm very humbled and very grateful and very, very lucky to work with an amazing team at the airport and to be supported by an amazing community that I do not think gets enough credit for all the great things that it does. So I've got two colleagues here with me tonight, they represent a team, nobody does anything alone, this is representative of what we're trying to do for the region, and I am really grateful for the partnership with county council, for all of you who've been out on the tour, thank you, and we're gonna be open this year, so thank you very much for this recognition and honor. Okay, thank you. Vince Gaskin?
Yeah. 13437-25.
A proclamation congratulating Molly Bozik as the I Voted sticker contest recipient sponsored by councilmembers Grisbeck and Hallam.
I do feel like Councilman Hallam should probably be the one who's actually reading this proclamation, you can see her face up there, I, she may be even more excited than Molly is about this proclamation and, you know, the I Voted sticker program as a whole, but I'm sure most of you have seen Molly's drawing, her design, really fantastic, the one I voted for, to be, to be fully transparent, little bit of hometown bias there though too. But you're also gonna hear, in addition to Molly's fantastic design, she's also an extremely accomplished young woman outside of her artistic abilities as well. So, a proclamation recognizing Molly Bozik. Whereas, this year, the Allegheny County Elections Division launched the I Voted sticker contest to engage all residents in Allegheny County in an election year when turnout typically drops significantly. The Elections Division administers elections two times a year, every year, and in those odd-numbered years, there are important local races for municipal and judicial offices on the ballot that are often overlooked by voters. And whereas, the I Voted sticker design contest reminds all residents that voting and democracy is an important right to exercise every year, and this sticker serves as a reminder to all to mark their calendars for the 2025 elections, and whereas, on February 5, 2025, the Allegheny County Elections Division announced Molly Bozik as the first ever I Voted sticker contest recipient. Molly is an active 10th grader at Mount Lebanon High School, she's on the high school field hockey team, she plays cello in the orchestra, she competes on the model UN and forensics teams, is part of the global studies program at the high school, and has a part-time job at a Mexican bakery. And that is it, that is it, I know, Molly, just, let's get it up a little bit. Molly enjoys the outdoors, traveling, and playing games with her siblings, and whereas, when crafting her design, she focused on creating a balance between our civic duty and Pittsburgh pride. She felt I Voted in that really captured the spirit of both. And whereas, the Elections Division launched the contest for high school students in the fall and received more than three dozen submissions of artwork, after county staff narrowed it down to 10 finalists, the public was invited to vote for the winning sticker. Competition was fierce, and more than 13,000 votes were cast, and whereas Molly's I Voted in that sticker received 2,410 votes to win the competition. The new sticker will make its elections debut at the May 20 primary and be used for elections in Allegheny County through 2025 and 2026. Now therefore be resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilmember Dan Grisbeck, alongside Allegheny County Councilmember Bethany Hallam, do hereby recognize Molly Bozik as the I Voted sticker contest recipient, and I recognize her efforts to engaging all residents in Allegheny County to remind them of their civic duty to vote. In witness whereof, I have hereunto caused the seal of the county of Allegheny to be affixed this 11th day of March 2025.
Hello, everyone, I'm so honored to be here today, and I can't wait for my sticker to be in print in the May elections. And whereas, the I Voted sticker design contest reminds all residents that voting and democracy is an important right to exercise every year. And this sticker serves as a reminder to all to mark their calendars for the 2025 elections. And whereas, on February 5, 2025, the Allegheny County Elections Division announced Molly Bozick as the first ever I Voted sticker contest recipient. Molly is an active 10th grader at Mount Lebanon High School. She's on the high school field hockey team. She plays cello in the orchestra. She competes on the model UN and forensics teams, is part of the Global Studies Program at the high school, and has a part-time job at a Mexican bakery. And that is it. That is it. I know. Molly, just let's get it up a little bit. Molly enjoys the outdoors, traveling, and playing games with her siblings. And whereas, when crafting her design, she focused on creating a balance between our civic duty and Pittsburgh pride. She felt I Voted in that really captured the spirit of both. And whereas, the Elections Division launched the contest for high school students in the fall and received more than three dozen submissions of artwork. After county staff narrowed it down to 10 finalists, the public was invited to vote for the winning sticker. Competition was fierce, and more than 13,000 votes were cast. And whereas, Molly's I Voted in that sticker received 2,410 votes to win the competition. The new sticker will make its elections debut at the May 20 primary and be used for elections in Allegheny County through 2025 and 2026. Now therefore be resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilmember Dan Grisbeck, alongside Allegheny County Councilmember Bethany Hallam, do hereby recognize Molly Bozick as the I Voted sticker contest recipient. And I recognize her efforts to engaging all residents in Allegheny County to remind them of their civic duty to vote. In witness whereof, I have hereunto caused the seal of the county of Allegheny to be affixed this 11th day of March, 2025.
I'm so honored to be here today, and I can't wait for my sticker to be in print in the May elections. Thank you to Mr. Grisbeck and Ms. Hallam and the rest of the Allegheny County Council for recognizing me in this special way. And thank you to everyone who voted in that.
[laughter]
A proclamation recognizing the Pittsburgh-St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee for their efforts in organizing the 2025 parade sponsored by all members of council.
And read into the record by the Italian person. Wearing green. Actually, my mother was Irish. So it's my honor and my friend. Okay, so this is, let's get our green on. Go Irish or go home. Okay, so officially, this is my good friend, Jack Goodrich, who didn't know I was going to be presenting it today, even though I saw him a couple of days ago at Sir Pizza. He's one of my good friends and good customers as well, he and his family. I didn't know that I was presenting it today, but it's my honor. And I thank you very much, everyone here who does everything to make Allegheny County green. And we all love it, even us Italians, right? We want to wear our green and show our pride. This is the day of the year, everybody's Irish. And we all.
It's in your flag, too.
What?
It's in your flag, too.
It sure is. It sure is. So I would officially say, this is an official, the Office of County Council gives this certificate of recognition, and it's awarded to the 2025 Pittsburgh-St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee. Since its inception, this St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee has been the driving force behind the annual parade, coordinating and managing all efforts in bringing the community together to ensure the success of this treasured event. And it truly is. Pittsburgh's annual St. Patrick's Day Parade celebrates Pittsburgh's Irish heritage and is normally attended by 200,000-plus people, all Irish for the day, as I said. It's a fun day. The parade is one of the oldest and largest St. Patrick's Day parades in the nation. The 2025 St. Patrick's Day Parade will feature numerous marching units, including bands, floats, several police, fire and emergency services agencies, elected leaders, along with many groups from Pittsburgh's Irish community. Allegheny County Council commends the Pittsburgh-St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee and the parade's sponsors: Schubert &amp; Associates, Pittsburgh Penguins, Rome Monument, First National Bank, Allegheny County Sheriff Kevin Kraus, of course, the White Family, the AOH Division Nine, Allegheny County Airport Authority, Baird Financial, Snyder Brothers Auto, Skyworks Equipment Rental, Wilkie CPAs and Advisors, Moran &amp; Moran Attorneys at Law, PNC, Senator Devlin Robinson, TruBeck Consulting, and Teamsters Local 249. This proclamation and recognition is sponsored by President Patrick Catina and all members of council and presented on the 11th day of March, 2025. Thank you very much.
Unknown participant is now joining.
Now I would like to present my friend, Jack Goodrich, to say something on behalf of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Honored to be here again. As they say, it's better to be seen than viewed, and I'm glad I'm being viewed. 'Tis the season. A lot of things are going on right now. This parade has originally started in 1869. It started with a bunch of Irishmen from the Confederate Brigade marching down Fifth Avenue. And since then, it's turned into probably the second-largest St. Patrick's Day Parade in the United States of America. And we defy anybody to tell us different. There's, right now, we have approximately 25,000 participants in the parade. Mike McGeever, who's very closely working with me on this, we've been checking our phone every 15 minutes to see what the weather is, and the weather keeps getting better. Right now, it looks like it's 72 degrees and sunny. If that happens, you'll probably have a half-million people in the city of Pittsburgh for a city that only has 300,000 people. So that tells you the pure economic development of this parade, which, by the way, is a gift of love. None of us make one penny. In fact, it costs us money to do this parade. The buttons that we have on, you see these, we have to pay for these ourselves. I'd like to briefly talk about that. I know there's a lot of stuff here tonight, and I know we're back on the Irish society that's next, so I'll make this short. King Brian Baru, who is considered the greatest Irish king in the history of Ireland, was born in 941. I'm not going to bore you with his details of his life, but he was very into the arts. He was an accomplished harpist, and he was a warrior king. In fact, his last battle against 10,000 Vikings, he led the charge with a battle axe. He was 73 years old. I'd like to see that happen today. Unfortunately, after the battle, he was ambushed and killed. But he is still considered the greatest Irish king of all time, and his memory and the thought is of a united Ireland, which is something we all want. So I'm going to leave you with that. That's why this is the button today. And Mac, Big Mac, who can't be here tonight, he's the grand marshal. It just so happens his one dog is called Baru. So I want to leave you with this. This year, the parade is going to be on webcast. We have private people coming and doing the webcast, JRM Video Production. They're going to be doing an outstanding job. It'll be on our Facebook page, Pittsburgh-St. Patrick's Day Parade, our YouTube page, and you can start watching it at 10 o'clock on Saturday morning, when we will kick this off. And also this year, there's a 5K race at 8 o'clock. There's a petting zoo, and we have the petting zoo in Market Square. We have all kinds of child-friendly events. And, you know, I'm very proud being involved since 1991, how we've taken a lot of the alcohol and the other stuff out of it and truly, truly made this a family event for everybody in the city of Pittsburgh. And remember our motto: We're inclusive, not exclusive. We want to see everybody down there. Thank you.
This one's yours. No.
One, three, four, three, nine, dash, two, five. A proclamation recognizing the Pittsburgh-St. Patrick's Day Parade Irish Society for Education and Charity sponsored by all members of council. And before proceeding, please let the record reflect that Mr. Klein is not present by telephone.
Okay. So officially, I will read this, but thank you very much. We have another presentation, again, all Irish. The Allegheny County Council has a certificate of recognition awarded to the Irish Society for Education and Charity. Since 1992, the Irish Society for Education and Charity has provided sponsorship, leadership, and guidance to the Pittsburgh-St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee in its efforts to organize and execute what is known as one of the largest St. Patrick's Day parades in the country. The organization also supports Pittsburgh's Irish community by awarding scholarships to local Irish students and by making donations to area groups and causes. The Allegheny County Council commends the Irish Society for Education and Charity for their passionate and tireless efforts to support Pittsburgh's Irish community, and thanks them for their numerous contributions. This recognition is sponsored by President Pat Catina and all members of council and presented this 11th day of March, 2025.
Thank you, everyone. I promise I'll be brief. It's hard to follow Jack, anyway, as anybody in this room knows. Hey, again, we just want to thank county council for this recognition. Again, Jack mentioned all the particulars, but there's a lot of other great people being honored here. Good, going back in memory lane, Jack, let's say 1991. I got involved with the parade back in probably '93 or '94. The Irish Society is the parent group, the parent corporation of the St. Patrick's Day Parade. We do have a charitable aspect as well, scholarships, funding different things in the community. It's just a real honor. There's 10 people on the board. Jack is the chair, I'm the treasurer, and there's other many people, but I won't get into all the names, because there's so many people here. But again, thank you, Allegheny County Council, and we look forward to seeing everyone on Saturday.
Right? We're all going to go up for a picture, Carmella?
Do you want to do them all at the end?
Is there another one?
Yeah, we still have more procs.
Oh, we do? Oh, six more.
One, three, four, four, zero, dash, two, five.
A memorial proclamation recognizing St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee member Peggy Cooney sponsored by all members of council.
Just not in the parade.
Okay. No, I'm not kidding you. Before I present this, I want to say a few words about your sister. So I'm not sure you know this, but she was our neighbor growing up. And every time I seen Peg, she had the widest smile. It's the first thing you saw on her. So we'd go up the street, see Bobby and Peg, and we'd wave, and they would all wave back. So everyone liked her in the neighborhood. She was a wonderful person, I'm sure you know that. But also, Bobby's about 6'5" and about 280 at one time, so if you didn't smile at him, he'd come to your house and put you in a bear hug.
That's true.
So you had a wonderful sister. So before you say a few words, I'll read your proclamation. Whereas Peggy Cooney was a lifelong resident of the city of Pittsburgh, where she graduated from St. Paul's Cathedral and St. Francis School of Nursing. And whereas Peggy joined the Ladies Ancient Order of Hibernians in 1974, where she held various offices throughout her years of service. In 1985, she was elected state president of the LAOH, succeeding her mother, then-president Sarah Madigan. Her dedication and leadership ultimately led to her serve as national president of the organization. And whereas Peggy founded the Allegheny County Cladda Degree, Cladda, I'm Irish, believe it or not, degree team, and has served as its director from its inception until her passing on October 19, 2024. She also took on the role of chairperson for the Miss Smiling Irish Eyes program within the Pittsburgh-St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee, a position she held dedication until her death. And whereas, in addition, Peggy was a chairperson of the Irish Society of Education since the 1990s, as was her brother Martin Madigan until his passing. And whereas Peggy had a deep love for her Irish heritage, embracing its tradition, music, laughter, and camaraderie, which she enthusiastically promoted at every opportunity. She was an icon on the Pittsburgh Irish community and nationally with the LAOH and the AOH. Now therefore be it resolved that we Allegheny County Councilmembers Bob Palmesina, Patrick Catina, and all president of council do hereby recognize Margaret Peggy Cooney and her contributions to the Irish community. In witness whereof, we have hereunto caused the seal of the county of Allegheny County to be affixed this 11th day of March, 2025. Congratulations.
You want to go first? Yeah, I'll go first. Thank you. This is such an honor, and Peggy would be so excited because her thing was to promote other people. She didn't want any recognition for herself. She just always wanted to make sure everyone was included and everyone was having a good time. And if she got something in her head, like, I'll never forget, it was 1985, she came home from a convention in San Antonio and said, "Oh, my goodness, they have a Cladda degree team. We're forming one. Allegheny County is going to have a Cladda degree team." And she started from, I mean, less than scratch. And I'll tell you one more thing. If it goes to be 72 on Saturday, that's a gift from Peggy. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Madigan. I'm Peggy's brother. I just want to say thank you to county council for this proclamation. And one other thing I'd like to say is, Jack and Mike are saying that they got involved with the parade like in 1992, '93. I marched in my first parade in 1958. So Peggy was a few years older than me, so I think she marched a few years ahead of me. So we really want to thank you for this proclamation, and we appreciate it. Thanks.
One, three, four, four, two, dash, two, five. Or I'm sorry, I skipped a one, three, four, four, one, dash, two, five.
A proclamation recognizing the Pittsburgh-St. Patrick's Day Parade Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Queen is Grace Rail sponsored by all members of council.
All right, so I want to start off by apologizing. When I got up at 4:30 this morning, I completely forgot that I was presenting this tonight, so my lack of appropriate Irish attire. I will make sure I fix that on Saturday. I will be appropriately decked out. So, you know, this award was one that was new to me. I wasn't familiar with all the criteria for Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Queen. You know, before I looked up what I would say when presenting this proclamation. But, you know, going through Miss Rail's resume, one of the things that I was really struck by was the criteria for outstanding moral character. And especially, you know, you're going to hear a lot about the incredible things she's already accomplished in her life. But one of the things that really, really stood out to me was how much work she's done in her commitment to both food and housing and security. So thank you very much for that. All right, without further ado, a proclamation recognizing 2025 Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Queen. Whereas, the Pittsburgh-St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee announced the 2025 Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Queen is Melanie Grace Rail, who is the daughter of Mary Malone, and Chris Rail of Mount Lebanon. And whereas, the title of Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Queen is among the most honored participants in the Pittsburgh-St. Patrick's Day Parade. And whereas, a recipient of Trinity College's Presidential Scholarship, Miss Rail is a faculty honors junior at Trinity College in Hartford, Connecticut, majoring in English Literature and Religious Studies. Miss Rail is a 2022 High Honors graduate of Mount Lebanon High School, where she is a member of the Cum Laude Society, the National Honor Society, and the recipient of numerous awards and scholarships. At Trinity College, Miss Rail is a member of the All-Female Acapella Group, an editor of the Trinity College vernacular, the school's literary magazine, and a member of the college newspaper staff. She is also the co-founder of an informal student organization for Irish dance and culture. And whereas, in addition to her involvement at Trinity College, Miss Rail has served as a campaign intern for Conor Lamb, Ed Ganey, and volunteered with the Day of Service sponsored by PA Governor Josh Shapiro and with the Trinity College Homelessness Project. Miss Rail also serves as a volunteer with the Hands-on Hartford Organization, a shelter for food and home insecurity in Hartford, Connecticut. And whereas, a second-generation Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Queen, Miss Rail is following in her mother's Miss Smiling Irish Eyes 1991 footsteps and holds a deep pride for her Irish heritage. With family hailing from counties Cork, Mayo, and Kilkenny, Miss Rail, a former Irish dancer through the Shovelin Academy of Irish Dance, credits her family's deep pride for Irish heritage, was shaping her into the woman she is today. And whereas, after visiting Ireland during her study abroad semester in fall of 2021, Miss Rail co-founded an informal Irish dance and culture club at Trinity College and has decided to focus her senior research project on the cultural and historical influence of the Irish community on the city of Pittsburgh. Upon her anticipated graduation in spring 2026, Miss Rail hopes to return to Ireland for graduate school. Now therefore be it resolved that we Allegheny County Councilmember Dan Grisbeck, Patrick Catina, and all members of council do hereby congratulate Melanie Grace Rail upon being named the 2025 Smiling Irish Eyes Queen for the Pittsburgh-St. Patrick's Day Parade. In witness whereof, we have hereunto caused the seal of the county of Allegheny to be affixed this 11th day of March, 2025. Congratulations.
Sorry, this is going to be very off the top of my head. But I would like to thank the county council first for having me here and for granting me this honor, and also, obviously... the county council first for having me here and for granting me this honor, and also, obviously, to the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee and the Irish Society for Education and Charity, and then the Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Committee as well. I am so beyond blessed and honored to get to stand here and accept this. Just incredible honor. I'm so proud to be Irish, and I'm so proud to get to stand where my mother may have stood in 1991 when she was awarded this honor as well. It's just, it's so incredibly important to me, and it's a dream come true. So, thank you, everyone and everything that has anything to do with this. Thank you.
1-3-4-4-2-2-5.
A proclamation recognizing the Pittsburgh St. Patrick's Day Parade Court Maidens as Reese Maggie Flowers and Elizabeth Rose Fitzgerald Sweeney, sponsored by all members of council.
Well, this is really a privilege for me. It is absolutely the best part of this job when I have an opportunity to recognize, you know, two very accomplished young women who, you know, giving so much back to the community. This really is more my honor here that I get to do this. And it, as I said, it really is the very best part of this job. So, whereas, the Pittsburgh St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee announced that the 2024 Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Court Maiden is Reese Maggie Flowers of the North Hills. And whereas, the title of Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Court Maiden is among the most honored participants in the Pittsburgh St. Patrick's Day Parade. And whereas, Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Court Maiden, Ms. Flowers, is a freshman at Chatham University studying psychology and minoring in environmental social work. The daughter of Heather Clunin and Ken Flowers, Ms. Flowers is a graduate of North Hills High School, where she was on the high honors track and lettered member of the lacrosse team. And whereas, Ms. Flowers holds her Irish pride close to her heart, the granddaughter of two Irish immigrants, Ms. Flowers' family is deeply involved in the Pittsburgh Irish community. Her late maternal grandfather, Thomas Clunin, hailed from County Galloway and was a cofounder of Celtic Irish Football Pittsburgh. Her maternal grandmother, Margaret Maggie O'Donohue Clunin, originally from County Kerry, is a longstanding member of LAOH Division 11 and the founder of St. Bridget's Court. And whereas, Ms. Flowers participated in Irish dancing briefly as a child before pivoting to sports, where she excelled in lacrosse and volunteered for various fundraising and community events, including interacting with other young girls interested in playing lacrosse. Now, therefore be it resolved that we Allegheny Councilmember Suzanne Filiaji, Pat Katina, and all members of council do hereby congratulate Reese Maggie Flowers upon her being named the 2025 Miss Smiling Eyes Court Maiden for the Pittsburgh St. Patrick's Day Parade. And witness whereof, we have hereunto caused the seal of the County of Allegheny to be affixed this 11th day of March, 2025.
Hello. I just want to say thank you so much to everyone. And there's so many committees to name, so I'm not even going to get into those. But thank you guys especially, and of course, thank you to all my Irish family members and everyone that's helped me get me to this point where I am now. And I just want to say how much this is an honor for me, because having like my grandparents have their heritage so strongly and represent that to me as a child was really interesting. And I didn't really get how like awesome and like honorable that was to have, until like now, I'm really seeing it, and I'm like, that's really cool. Like, it's pretty cool to be Irish. It's not just the drinking and all that stuff that people say. It's, there's a lot of community and lots of love, and I'm just so happy to be part of that and be a part of a face of that. So, thank you guys so much.
And next is Elizabeth Rose Fitzgerald Sweeney. Whereas, the Pittsburgh St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee announced that the 2024 Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Court Maiden is Elizabeth Rose Fitzgerald Sweeney of Ohio Township. And whereas, the title of Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Court Maiden is among the most honored participants in the Pittsburgh St. Patrick's Day Parade. And whereas, Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Court Maiden, Mrs. Sweeney, is a senior at Avonworth High School, where she holds an unweighted GPA of 4.5 and is a member of the National Honor Society. She plans to attend the University of Pittsburgh upon her graduation from Avonworth High School in spring 2025. And whereas, Ms. Sweeney, the daughter of Katie and Teddy Sweeney, is an active member of the Avonworth community, is a member of the Avonworth volleyball team, a peer mentor, a member of Avonworth Young Life, the Special Olympics Club Business Pathways, and the Avonworth Unified Bocce Club, which helps disabled players learn the game of bocce while enjoying the social aspect that accompanies practices and matches. And whereas, in addition to her extracurriculars, Ms. Sweeney has a passion for volunteerism. She has traveled with Divine Mercy Parish to Jamaica to serve a mission with Move a Mountain Missions, where she served disabled children and adults, and assisted in the improvements of local facilities. She is a counselor at Camp Quantique, a YMCA camp that welcomes all adults ages 18 and over regardless of intellectual or physical ability. And whereas, Ms. Sweeney's volunteer efforts have also allowed her to further explore her Irish heritage. She has advocated Irish history through Girl Scout experiences, volunteered at the Epiphany Catholic Church's yearly celebration of Irish Catholic descent, and has had the opportunity to further explore her Irish heritage through her uncle's involvement in Ancient Order of Hibernians Division 9. Now, therefore let it be resolved that we Allegheny Councilmember Jack Betkowski, Patrick Katina, and all members of council do hereby congratulate Elizabeth Rose Fitzgerald Sweeney upon being named the 2025 Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Court Maiden for the Pittsburgh St. Patrick's Day Parade. And witness whereof, we have hereunto caused the seal of the County of Allegheny to be affixed this 11th day of March, 2025.
I just wanted to come here and say thank you to the committee for this opportunity and the incredible experiences that I get to go to this week. And I also want to thank my family for raising me in such an amazing Catholic Irish household, where I've grown to love and cherish the heritage, and I'm so excited to present that to everyone this week.
We'll save pictures for the end, so words could be the next. Proclamation at this point, which is 1-3-4-4-3-2-5.
A proclamation recognizing the Pittsburgh St. Patrick's Day Parade Allegheny County AOH Hibernian of the Year is Ed McManus, sponsored by all members of council.
And just, my Gaelic's not great. Thank you. We're going to give it a go, folks. All right. A proclamation recognizing 2025 Allegheny County AOH Hibernian of the Year. Whereas, the Pittsburgh St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee announced that the 2024 Allegheny County AOH Hibernian of the Year is Mr. Ed McManus. He is a dedicated member of the Ancient Order of Hibernians, or AOH Division 1. And whereas, Mr. McManus was the first financial secretary of AOH Division 1. He has held numerous roles, serving as a division past president and has been treasurer for the last 15 years. And whereas, as well as being a member of AOH Division 1, Mr. McManus is a member of Tri-Awen?
Tri-Awen.
Tri-Awen, all right, knew I'd botch that, MDT, and served as the treasurer for the state convention in 2020 and 2022. And whereas, alongside his dedication to the Irish community, Mr. McManus is a retired City of Pittsburgh school teacher of 35 years and is the past secretary of the Pittsburgh Federation of Teachers. He is also a member of St. Michael the Archangel Parish. And whereas, as a proud family man, Mr. McManus is married to his wife Vivian for almost 40 years and have one daughter, Julia, whose many talents include being a stand-up comic. Now, therefore be it resolved that we Allegheny County Councilmembers Dan Grisbeck, Patrick Katina, and all members of council do hereby congratulate Mr. Ed McManus upon being named the 2025 Allegheny County AOH Hibernian of the Year. Allegheny County Council congratulates Mr. McManus for this honor bestowed upon him and thanks him for all his contributions to better our community. And witness whereof, we have hereunto caused the seal of the County of Allegheny to be affixed this 11th day of March, 2025.
I'd like to start by thanking the council for this, well, I was going to say speechless, but you'll find out I'm not. Because I did make the call when I found I was Hibernian of the Year, I said I wasn't surprised, I was more shocked and speechless. Well, the speechless is gone away, but now I'm just shocked and surprised. I want to make one correction. With the Tri-Awen, if anybody's wondering, that's Gaelic for Three Rivers. In the end, it's Major Degree Team. So, we're the Three Rivers Major Degree Team. Well, still want to stay here. One thing, if you notice, through my functions with the AOH, almost all of them have to do with their money. So, they sort of trust me, because I've been the treasurer for my division, did both the state and national treasury. So, and I'd like, and again, so I'd like to thank, like to thank the council members. I'd like to thank AOH members that were here that did elect me for this. I've been 35 years with the AOH Division 1. And as I said at the Communion Breakfast, I said I hope the next 35 years are as good as the last 35 years, even though I realize that'll be 105. So, thank you very much. It's greatly appreciated.
1-3-4-4-4-2-5.
A proclamation recognizing the Pittsburgh St. Patrick's Day Parade Grand Marshal as J. Mack McCafferty, sponsored by all members of council.
Jack, do you want to accept that form?
It would be my honor to accept it for him.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, we're going to start the pictures. So, we'll start with, want to start with the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee to come up for a picture? And then, don't go back to your seats. Just go off to the side, because after we get through individual pictures, we're going to do a group picture of everybody. So. Okay, the remaining proclamations and certificates we read into the record, 1-3-4-4-5-2-5.
A proclamation congratulating Mayor of Kingston on season four, sponsored by Councilmember Katina.
1-3-4-4-6-2-5.
A proclamation recognizing Christopher Cox upon his retirement from the Department of Court Records, sponsored by Councilmember Grisbeck.
1-3-4-4-7-2-5.
A proclamation celebrating Amy Bell Stevenson upon the occasion of her 100th birthday, sponsored by Councilmember Walton.
1-3-4-4-8-2-5.
Certificates of recognition presented to the 2024 Highland Volunteer Fire Department, sponsored by Councilmember Filiaji.
1-3-4-4-9-2-5.
Certificates of recognition presented to the 2025 Mount Lebanon Residents Academy Recipients, sponsored by Councilmember Grisbeck.
Public comment on agenda items?
We have none.
Okay, approval of minutes, 1-3-4-3-2-2-5.
A motion to approve the minutes of the February 11th, 2025 Regular Meeting of Council.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of appointments. All of the appointments being presented this evening are referred to the Committee on Appointment Review. If there are no objections, I'd like the clerk to read them all at this time. Hearing, no objections? Go ahead and read them. Jared, please.
The first group is to the Community Services Advisory Council for terms effective through March 25th, 2027. 1-3-4-1-3-2-5 is the appointment of Sally Elwine. 1-3-4-1-4-2-5 is the appointment of Monique Yost. 1-3-4-1-5-2-5 is the appointment of
decision is made to use the chair, and the duration of how long the chair is used to prevent injury. The decision to use the chair is only made after verbal de-escalation techniques have not been successful. The officers can also describe to you their feelings of coping with the thoughts of having a physical intervention with a resisting resident at any time that could result in injury. Based upon a recent court ruling, our jail frontline staff are able to talk with the media and politicians as long as they do not speak on behalf of the jail administration, but speak on behalf of the union. Each of the officers you would be talking with will say that, that they are not talking on behalf of the jail administration, but are talking on behalf of the union. This will be a significant experience for our officers in which this kind of communication will take place, giving the officers a voice which they have not had before. Your support in helping the officers feel comfortable in processing with you will make a significant difference. This could be also a start of a relationship which could continue, in which you could access our officers in the future and build your understanding of what happens in our jail and their ideas about change. Your access to frontline staff in increasing your understanding of the operations of the jail will help you in assessing cost issues and the decisions you have to make regarding the budgeting of the jail. I value your time and I will be contacting you. Our officers work different shifts and a lot of overtime. I will accommodate everyone's schedule as best as possible. I am also working to see if we could also access the expertise of our healthcare staff for you concerning how the restraint chair can be used effectively in certain medical crises. Thank you.
Next up is Craig Bailey.
Not here?
Last is Jacob Poole.
Not here? Or he's here, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, I'm Jacob Poole, formerly Zoltan Joltlevandjakub. I have name confusion because I was in American-operated children's camps in the 80s and 90s when the Soviet Union was collapsing and Yugoslavia was being bombed. From 1986 to 1996, I was in American-operated children's camps between those two things, where children were collected to and our names were changed, given new identities, and one by one shipped to America. And so I'm here in a, after being child slave traded to America, in various forms of captivity. I don't have no one in my life, I don't even have an emergency contact. People approach me all the time trying to take me to forced labor sites all over Allegheny County. So, yeah, that's my life, every day, and I'm here to try and propose a census to measure how many of us are like this in Allegheny County or the Pittsburgh metro. Because based on my little bit of research I've done, Allegheny, the Pittsburgh metro has a population of roughly 2.3 million, of which 30% is immigrants and their children. And based on a little bit I've been told, Pittsburgh metro has roughly 60,000 people that were brought here like me just from the era of the Soviet Union collapse and Yugoslavian bombings, collected into refugee camps and children's camps and sort of slave traded here, moved here by force as children by myself. So I want to propose a census to see how many of us are like this, spread out, sort of held captive. All my documents are actively being manipulated around me, all my medical documents, everything. I have surgical scars on my head, my spine, and I've never been given medical documents for them, and they were done in the Pittsburgh area when I was brought here as a 12-year-old child in the 90s. And no one ever gave me medical documents for medical child slave trading things they've done to me. So, yeah, that's reality, and that's how things operate in the background. It's not in this room. In this room thus far, everyone has all been happy and nice things, but in the background of Pittsburgh, there are at least 60,000 people brought here in the 80s and 90s during the Soviet Union collapse from Ukraine and from Yugoslavia, and were in essentially isolated slavery, forced labor conditions. And most people I meet from Eastern Europe in the Pittsburgh area, they're scared and trembling people. They're not proud citizens. They're timid, exhibiting signs of captivity and forced labor, like I am. I'm always nervous and trembling due to 25 years of exploitation. And like I said, I have surgeries done to me when I was 13 in the Pittsburgh area, and no one gave me medical records for them, and still don't, because that's how child slave trading works in the background of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you. We had one person miss our deadline to sign up for public comment yesterday. Does anyone object to letting her speak?
No.
Madam Treasurer?
He just knows how much fun he's going to have for the last three minutes. Good evening, I'm Erica Roki-Bresser, as I service the Allegheny County Treasurer. Thank you for accommodating my request to speak tonight. I'm here to speak in favor of your new business, 12433-25, entitled Tax Bill Disclosure Bill of Rights. Over the past year, my office has been focused on modernizing services, improving communications, and enhancing our internal processes to best serve the residents of Allegheny County. One area of this focus was the redesign of our real estate tax bills to make them easier to read and understand. And while we've received much positive feedback about the redesign, we also recognize that some changes, such as not displaying the homestead exemption, caused confusion and questions, and we plan to address these before next year's billing cycle. I appreciate the steps county council is taking to codify practices and enhancements for our taxpayers. I especially want to focus on three items in this tax bill disclosure. I fully support the shift in face value date in future years from April 30th to May 31st. I like the idea so much, I suggested it in a non-agenda public comment back in 2023. I'm pleased to see the change to ensuring tax checks are not made out to an individual, but rather the county. I supported this change while campaigning and implemented it as soon as I started in office, and we've received consistently appreciative feedback about it. We support having a statutory deadline when bills will be mailed. We are already actively working on processes and to identify vendors to ensure the timely mailing of next year's tax bill. My goal is to make things simpler and more accessible for our residents and taxpayers and to reduce the costs in the long term. My team is ready to work with council in partnership on advancing policies that best serve our residents, and I look forward to our progress and improvements ahead. We would love to collaborate with sponsors and with the committee reviewing the ordinance in order to best meet the needs of taxpayers of Allegheny County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion has, is there a second? Motion has been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Happy St. Patrick's Day.